No, we don't do the pledge for the work session.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes.
We've had just a couple people call in that were not able to find the Zoom link from the public. So we are getting them that information right now. So we might want to wait just a minute before Julie really dives into her map. So.
Okay, just give me, give me the word. We can be a little late as far as I'm concerned.
It's leaking too?
You know, I want to make sure that everybody can get in this thing. Okay. All right, ready to start then? Okay, welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session, February 10th, 2021. Accessible via Zoom or phone. Item number one, we've got 2021 Gypsy Moss Spray Block Map, and we've got Julie Crick from MSU Extension Forestry to do us a presentation. So. Julie, go ahead. And I believe. Daniel's on, who is our lead person in regards to our Gypsy Moss Crew, too. Am I correct?
I am here. Yes, that's me.
Okay, thank you. All right, Julie, go ahead.
Well, Bob, it's Jody. I'm just going to give, because I know we have a couple people on that might not know the last year's history of Gypsy Moths.
Okay.
Obviously, we've been trying to take the program into a more customer-focused, interactive. Program that will allow us to work more with the community, not only on preventing and the sprays, because obviously we're not an eradication program. Where it's a control program. But to work with homeowners to take those measures that if they aren't sprayed, or the spray for some reason. Has a effect that we weren't hoping for to help them actually put some preventative measures in place to protect trees. Julie Crick from MSUE, who is our forester and guru of many things. Was a lifesaver. We partnered with MSUE through the decision of the Board of Commissioners to have oversight there for expertise. And then we were lucky enough that Daniel, who has worked with us as a surveyor before, was willing to come in and take. What initially we call the lead position, however, is evolving into something else that we'll have to define a little bit better here eventually. Now, this being that this is a presentation to the Board of Commissioners of the findings, I want to let the public know, Bob. They can email questions to commissioners@rosscommoncounty.net. And I will type that into the comments as well. So I think that's all. And I'll let Julie get to the meat of the presentation.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners and everyone in Roscommon County. Wanted to begin by saying that this year we had an exceptional crew. Daniel led the crew for egg mass surveys, and I wanted to give him a chance just to kind of describe that process. So Daniel, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. You know, I've been thinking long and hard about what I was going to say here. And, you know, for starters, I just, I want to extend a warm thank you to everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to work in this position. Thank you, Julie, for all the valuable knowledge that you bring to the program. And thank you to Rebecca, who's been fielding all of our calls. Called into the Gypsy Moth Program, you've likely spoken to Rebecca, and she has just done a fabulous job. I have to say thank you to my wonderful crews from last year. We just had an exceptional crew. So Dan, Dustin, Bill, and Brittany, Brad, and Brandon, all of them just did an exceptional job last year. We had a very successful survey season. We worked much later into the year than we have historically. And because we had such excellent crews, we managed to complete a survey of basically the entire county, all the regions that we are able to go in and survey. Were covered. Over the course of the 2020 season, we had over 400 residents call in and request surveys or information. We were able to follow up with every one of those residents. And I just, I'm very pleased with how everything worked out. Hopefully. We're going to have a better season this year in terms of our Gypsy Moth suppression and some of the factors that caused 2020 to be such an exceptional year. You know, hopefully we'll get some things in our favor going into 2021. So that's, that's about it.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and share the Gypsy Moth Spray Block Map. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and share my screen on that. And then I'll try and take you through exactly how we. We came up with this map. Can you all see the map pretty well? You can see that? Okay. I just want to be sure. Thank you. And so what we did was we, we took all of the survey data that the crews collected. And we considered. Different factors as far as putting properties in spray block maps. We obviously looked at the density of egg masses in an area on a property. And then if there were egg mass counts on surrounding properties. Just want to point out that the way the crews take data is if they don't find anything, they don't actually record a point. And so any point that's on the map means the crews found things. The points aren't on this map, but that's what we actually defined our spray blocks by. We looked at the density of egg masses that were found at each point. We looked at the percent of trees in an area. If it was one isolated tree that had a high egg mass count, it probably didn't make a spray block. Because there weren't surrounding trees around it, and we would rely on a homeowner to go ahead and do some preventative measures on their own for those isolated trees. We also considered the species of trees that were in an area. If an area is covered with pine or spruce or something along those lines, we probably didn't include it in a spray block map. Just because those aren't the preferred species of trees that caterpillars like to eat. We considered the density of homes in areas as well. And one of the things that was really tough for us to make decisions is about, we also considered the proximity to state land. And we did that because we've, in the past, we were looking at old spray block maps. We've repeatedly treated areas that are adjacent to state land, and those areas repeatedly have high egg mass counts. And so in order to be judicious with the taxpayer dollars that we're spending in order to do the spraying. We wanted to be sure that we were trying to be efficient and effective in the areas that we chose for spraying. And so in some cases, if an area was adjacent to state land and had high egg mass counts, we didn't include it in the spray blocks. Just because we knew, as in past years, they would probably still become infected, and the spray really wouldn't be effective for that. And again, that's over years of experience watching, you know, which areas get infested. And so what I'd like to do is, you know, rather than take you through the whole map, as I've done with a couple of the Commissioners. I wondered if any Commissioners had any particular areas that you'd like to zoom in on or have questions about that you'd like to see in a little bit more detail.
Mr. Chair, could I speak, just ask a quick question? Bari Lake area is a concern.
Okay, you're going to have to tell me a little bit more than that. It's probably down in this area here, right?
Basically, just Snowball Road.
Snowball Road, I think that's right here. That's, I think that's the correct area.
Yeah, that looks, that looks right to me. Of course, not having my glasses on, getting 65 now, I can only see so good.
We didn't cover, we didn't have as large of a spray block area in Snowball Road as we did last year. We pulled it in from the edges in order to create more coverage over the residences. And not as much in areas where there aren't houses. And so we did cover the area, but not as well as we did last year.
Thank you.
Julie, anybody else?
Julie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just to your point about not spraying small parcels surrounded by state land. I'm looking at the map here, and on the right side. North of St. Helen. It looks like there's a small parcel that is surrounded by state land.
Is that it, right there? I can zoom into the whole area and we can take a look.
Well, yes, there's, move your cursor to the, there you go. See that, that one right there? That's a small parcel that's surrounded by state land.
Yes, there were high egg mass counts in here, and they had not been sprayed in the past. And so we did go ahead and include them in the spray block this year. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner McCallum. Do you know of the Sandy Oaks subdivision, which is south of 55 on Owens Road?
Is that it right there?
I believe so. Yeah.
So that looks like it is included in a spray block. That kind of looks like it.
Yeah. Yep. That'll be it. Thank you.
Any other questions about the areas that we have? This map will be available to the public. It'll be published on our website as soon as possible. I'll go ahead and stop sharing, and I have a little bit more information. Or I can leave that up so you can just keep taking a look at that if you'd like. Knowing that we couldn't include everybody, every property where we found an egg mass count into the spray block maps. We developed a series of resources for people to implement on their own, on their own properties. One of those is using duct tape bands. I used those last year. I'm in Crawford County, so I didn't get sprayed, obviously. And if you use duct tape bands, when the caterpillars balloon out of the trees at night, they won't cross the duct tape around the bowl of the tree or around the trunk of the tree. They won't cross that to go back up. They can certainly go from tree to tree still. But I was, I was actually shocked by the number of caterpillars that remained below the duct tape, and I was able to harvest those and dispatch of them. And so that's, that's some advice. We also have some horticultural oils and things that people can use before the Gypsy Moth egg mass is actually hatch. And new this year, we're allowing townships to add extra acreage at the expense of the township or the resident, whatever they choose to do. So if there are townships that feel like they didn't get the coverage that they'd like to see, or residents want to add extra acreage, they can do that through their township. Minimum is 40 acres, and we do have, will offer the same price that we're paying this year. We're the last year of a 10-year contract for our Gypsy Moth Spray Blocks or Aerial Spraying. This year, we continue to have a price of $25.99 per acre. We'll have to renegotiate that contract over the summer. It's likely going to jump to $40 to $50 per acre. I was talking to our aerial sprayer, and he said that because our contract went for so long, we're pretty much a remnant in the country, and we're getting the lowest price this year of anybody. And so we would allow townships to jump on board with this spray block map for that price, $25.99 per acre. What that gets townships is we actually do the permitting process. And so we file permits with MDOT and with the DNR, I believe with Eagle as well, just to let them know what we're spraying. We'll handle that process for any extra acreage. And because of that, we need to have the extra acreage to us by March 10th. And to accommodate that permitting process. Any township supervisors who are interested in participating in this, please email Commissioners, please, please send an email to commissioners@rosscommoncounty.net. The same email that Jody shared earlier, and let us know of your interest. We've developed a spreadsheet for easy record keeping so that you can just take phone calls and add parcel numbers, basically, and then the owner information. We're not advertising this to the public. We're allowing townships to take that on and spread the word as they'd like to do. One of the last things I'd like to say is it's never too early to think about hiring seasonal crews for 2021 for the summer. So if you know of anybody that's looking for seasonal work this summer, please recommend that they go ahead and apply with the Gypsy Moth Program anytime. We'll be accepting applications starting immediately, and then we'll start to hire in June and July of this summer. With that, I'll stop sharing. Are there any other questions for us? Or did I forget anything, Daniel or Jody?
Julie, I just wanted to do a quick follow-up on your employment statement. This year, one of the things that we offered that we have not done in the past is we did some basic goal setting for our crews. Some of, some of them were pretty easy targets, like wearing their masks when they're in their vehicles. Showing up to work on time, you know, responding to the appropriate locations. And halfway through the season, they were actually bumped in pay based on meeting those goals. So instead of having to wait for another year to come back, we gave them some incentive pay increase for achieving goals. Because we do know that this is a seasonal position, and it's hard to fill, and it's. It's fun, but you are, you're constantly moving and you're constantly going. And, you know, I think Daniel would tell you by, by the end of the season, it's a little chilly on some mornings. But it's, it's fun. This was a great group that we had this year, so I hope we can add some more great people to it.
Okay, anything else for many Commissioners at this time in regards to Gypsy Moth?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that, you know, one thing that we've had in the past, not lately under Julie and Daniel's leadership, but it's important that our vehicles. And the crews have proper signage on their vehicles, so when they go into an area, people understand they're from our Gypsy Moth. Thank you.
We are, just want to address that really quick. We're working on some solutions for that this summer to have more visible signage, something along those lines for vehicles. So thank you, Mark. That is, that is a concern that we're addressing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, nobody else? I think Daniel and Julie and the whole, you know, MSU. I believe Rebecca was involved. She took a lot of those 400 calls, if I'm not mistaken. So I thank everybody, because I think things went very well this year. And thank you for an excellent presentation. So with that, unless somebody else has got, any other Commissioners got anything, we'll move on to number two.
Thank you, Julie and Daniel.
Okay, number two, E91 project updates. Vance had one, has got a couple of things he wants to bring up today. So I told him he could bring them both up, and we put it under project update. So go ahead, Vance.
All right, good morning. Make sure you can hear me okay?
I can.
Okay, very good. So yeah, we've been busier like everybody else here at Central Dispatch. We have a number of things in motion, so I'm here to touch on that. So the first thing I want to bring up. Last year, I did receive approval from the 911 Authority Board to come to the Board of Commissioners to request an 11th roster position for the dispatch center. There's a couple reasons behind that, primarily because of the ongoing personnel shortage we've had. What having the 11th position would allow us to do would be one over our current staffing level. And have somebody that would be trained or in training if another vacancy came up. And would help mitigate some of those additional costs when we go through the process of hiring, training, et cetera. Currently, our staffing is at eight. We have. One, excuse me, seven fully trained, one that is continued in training, and we have an open hiring window right now. So we're in the process of just filling our current roster. But with the approval of the Authority Board. I would like to bring a motion to the Commissioners at the next meeting to approve an 11th roster position. Questions on that one? No. Okay. So next, briefly, the CAD RMS JMS project multi-agency is reaching toward the final stages here. Our go-live date is April 20th, and our end-user training starts here this month. We have been able, and thank you again, Commissioners, for allowing us to use the Commissioners Meeting Room. With the COVID restrictions, it was going to pose a very big challenge to allow everybody to train together. And that will provide us the space we need for the two largest, three largest sessions. And as you know, that room has been set up. So thanks to Charlie and Maintenance, and I think Lieutenant Beck also had some input there as well for getting that done. So thank you for that. So end-user training starts here at the end of this month, and then come April, we'll be live in that. That includes a new computer-aided dispatching system for Roscommon and Crawford Counties. A new records management system for all the local police agencies, including the Roscommon County Sheriff's Department, Crawford County Sheriff's Department. And a new jail management system, JMS, also for both counties. So first time in our history that we've been able to take this step. It is significant for us and will be, in my opinion, a very big step for public safety for both counties. I would leave the other agencies to speak on that, but I think they're in agreement there. Any questions on that one? Nope. All right. All right. Last but not least, it's a big one. So we have been talking with Crawford County since, well. The original idea started in 2005, long before Vance was here. But so over the last year, we've been in communication with Crawford County Sheriff's Department regarding their dispatch. As mentioned, they have had ongoing staffing issues as we have. And we have explored some cost-saving possibilities of. The term that is used is consolidation, but in a legal sense, it's not a full consolidation. What it would be would be Roscommon County providing dispatching services for Crawford County. The difference being is, is that it would not have to require a change of our funding mechanism. Our village would stay the same. In the sense that we wouldn't have to go for a vote in another county, et cetera. So we've taken a couple different approaches since we really got into this this last year. We originally were going to provide support services, meaning if they had a staffing issue and were not able to staff a minimum level at their center. We would take on that responsibility for them at a per-hour cost. As the other technical projects have been moving forward and our own personnel shortages here in Roscommon County, I did put a hold on that part of the project. And they have been able to get to a spot where they can, it's less of an urgent matter for them. We were able to get all the technological, almost all the technological pieces in place. So in an emergency situation, we could still provide the service they need, answer the 911 calls, dispatch their law enforcement and their ambulance and fire departments. So again, the technological pieces to provide emergency support services for Crawford County are in place, and we can do that today if needed. Questions so far? Okay. All right. So the big piece of this puzzle is Crawford has also expressed a very big interest. In actually moving forward with Roscommon County, providing those contracted services. So what does that mean? In a sense, that would mean they would close their dispatch center altogether. They would, we would enter in a contract with Crawford County to provide those services. We would dispatch for Roscommon and Crawford Counties out of the Roscommon Dispatch Center. Their 911 lines would ring into our dispatch center as would their administrative lines. Again, most of those technological pieces are already in place. And we could provide that service today in an emergency situation, but we're talking about actually providing contracted services. It was last year, the Authority Board at the October. I believe it was the October or September meeting did give approval for me to explore this option further. And. And here we are today. We've gone back and forth. Some of the goals have become more clear as we've moved along. And it does appear that in a perfect world, that Crawford would be willing or would want to have us take over their dispatching services. In the October window of this year. Is that actually possible? Technologically, yes. There's a lot of pieces that have to be done, put in place, approvals by various boards, including you, the Commissioners. For us to enter into such a contract, and those details have to be nailed down. I did provide them a draft. Contract. They have gone through that. There are some changes they're going to request, and we are moving through that piece right now. One of the pieces I know that is. Needs to be discussed is they would like a voice on the 911 Authority Board. And I am actually personally and professionally in full support of that. They would provide us. Right now, the, they would, they're estimating approximately $250,000 a year to provide that service to Crawford County. And that's a very large sum of money, and I think having their voice on the board would be very beneficial actually for the overall operation. Obviously, that would pose some changes to the Authority Board. But the impact on the service provided to our Roscommon citizens, in my opinion, would not change. In fact, there would be cost savings to both counties, and I think that. There would be some benefits financially there overall. That being said. Again, just looking at some notes here, we, that train is under motion, and we are well down the tracks. And at the point where we are going to have some additional meetings with Crawford. Nail down some additional details that I can present to you more as facts and just ideas. And with all that being said, I know there's, well, I assume there'd be a lot of questions from our Commissioners, so I'd be happy to entertain whatever you have.
Commissioner Russo, could you jump in here and as far as the Authority Board and give some thoughts, please?
Yeah, we discussed it, and it wasn't, you know, just a quick discussion. We looked into it into death, and we all agree that it would be good for both counties.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to ask a question here. What you, when you talk about the actual Authority Board would have to be expanded, how many members are there on that board now?
When we are, when we're full, we have two vacancies right now. We have, I believe it's six. So.
You're correct, Vance.
Yep, we would be looking at eight, providing two seats for Crawford County to have a voice.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That's good. So you're, you're still working on what that's going to look like, but that's kind of, I just wanted an idea.
Yep, absolutely. I see it, Ken. I grabbed the, the language from the E911 plan. The boards are defined within that plan, so there would be some updates required for that, just to allow for those extra seats. But it's more of a paperwork thing on that end, and. It's complicated, but not difficult to accomplish, if that makes any sense.
Okay, Commissioner Melvin?
Yes, Vance, I can remember. I don't know how long ago it was, we were in some discussions with Ogama County, and we didn't get a long ways into that before that one fell through. But we were in, I seem to remember we were in some discussions with Upper Peninsula. Three-county area that shares 911. I think it's like Mackinac, Chippewa, and something else right across the bridge. Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, so the 911 UP Authority. Includes eight dispatch centers in all the counties of the Upper Peninsula. That was with regard to our 911 phone system. And we relied on them, the 911, the UP 911 Authority. Really blazed the trail in the state as far as cooperation on their CAD system, or CAD system, but also the phone system. So. We weren't looking to partner with them, but they did lead the example for us partnering with Alpena, Ascot, Crawford, and Ogama Counties with our 911 telephone system. So that's, that's exactly what it is. Yeah.
Well, I remember there was like three counties just north of the bridge that operated out of one dispatch center.
Okay, yeah, that is Loose County, Chippewa County, and Mackinac County. And all the 911 lines from Loose and Chip, Loose and Mackinac ring into the Chippewa Dispatch Center. And they dispatch long fire EMS for all of those counties out of one center. And they dispatch, uh, long fire EMS for all of those counties out of one center. And, uh, they have been, now that's a, that's a full on consolidation, but they've been doing that for as long as I can remember. I could find out more in the history of that if you like, but it is definitely done before. The most recent consolidation that I'm aware of in the state is, uh, Kalamazoo. Kalamazoo County, uh, used to have, uh, several police departments that had their own nine one one dispatch centers. And it's now, uh, Kalamazoo consolidated. So it's one county, but that's the evolution that they looked at and brought it into one center. So.
So we do have examples out there that are, have been successful as far as multi counties that aren't too far away from us. Have you looked at those as kind of a template? So we're not reinventing the wheel here?
Hundred percent. Absolutely. Yeah. In fact, the, uh, language that I have, um, was originally created, I believe it was. And I'm almost positive it was for the Chippewa, Loose, Mackinac, uh, situation. I made some adjustments to that, presented it to Doug Van Essen out of Silver and Van Essen, who was a, uh, just. A lawyer out of Grand Rapids who's very familiar with nine one one law. Point, yes, following their example. Uh, relying on the language, not reinventing that wheel and potentially opening up some liabilities. So that has already been run by a lawyer at one point. So. I think we're in good shape there. With, with some potential changes coming to, to meet the needs of both counties.
Very good, Vance. Uh, that, that kinda refreshes my memory about, uh, those particular items and, uh. I feel confident with you going forward with this, with your recommendation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Muckenthaler.
Yes, um, you said that Crawford wants you guys to possibly take over by October, the dispatching up there. Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I, we have to work those details out, but they are on a fiscal year. And September thirtieth is the end of their fiscal year. October first is the beginning. And I'm guessing, and this is a guess, that that is the window they're shooting for based on just, uh, conversations on the phone. So.
Okay, does. Their dispatchers, would they be willing to come down? To work with us? Would it be a possibility of getting more dispatchers, dispatchers?
Right, um, so that is one of the, the things that, uh, I have put a lot of brain power in. The answer is yes. We can, the number one cost of nine one one service for any county, like many businesses, of course, is personnel. And openings that we have, I would be more than happy to test them through our process to make sure they meet the standards of our hiring policy, et cetera. And would be good fits for Roscommon County Central Dispatch. Um, I think it'd only be fair that anybody who wishes to remain in the, in the field, if we have openings to allow them to test for it. And we have yet to fully discuss and vet. I don't see making it automatic that they just walk in the door and have a job. I wanna make sure that we aren't, uh, compromising our current operation and standards. And it's not to say they do anything poorly up there. I just haven't worked with them. Gotta make sure they can do it the way we want them to do it.
Yeah, I just wonder if that was a option.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Melbourne.
Thank you, Mr. Stringham. I appreciate your, uh, your, your discussion today, but I'm, I'm only in support of this if its values and benefits are Roscommon County citizens. I think you've got that in plan, but I just want that to be understood. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Um, again, I'm still crunching some numbers, but, uh. I can tell you that at the end of this year, the nine one one current nine one one mileage for Roscommon County does expire. It will be on a ballot next year. And, uh, I am looking very closely at the possibility of being able to, um. Uh, request less than our current mileage based on the, the revenue that combined Crawford, Roscommon. So. Um, I can't give you a yes or no if that is going to be a savings or not. I, I think it is, but I have to make sure first. So yeah, it would definitely be a benefit in my opinion to Roscommon County.
And, and that's my focus. At the end of the day, my, my focus is, is our citizens.
Absolutely. I agree a hundred percent.
And the other, the other thing you have to remember is, is that what Vance is talking about is a contract with Crawford County. It is not. A consolidation. That's two different, two different animals. So, um. We're, you know, which is where we ended up with Ogumaw County and then they, Ogumaw County balked at it, but it was a little different situation because they didn't have a mileage. So the complicated things. So we're looking at strictly a contract with Crawford and that's what Crawford is really interested in at this point.
So that's correct. That's correct.
Great. Any other commissioners have anything for Vance, please? Vance, anything else?
Uh, nope. A lot of pieces in motion and keeping everybody busy. I just shout out to, uh, both, uh, Mike Beatty and Curly. Trembs, uh, they have to put in a great deal of work for this CAD RMS GMS project. And it's been taking a lot of hours, uh, and work. So, um, the wheels are staying on the bus and it's taken a good team to do that. So I appreciate them.
Okay, uh, keep us posted particularly on that thing with Crawford County. All right.
Will do.
All right. Onto number three, please. Administrator Secretary Position Discussion of the Whole. Just like to start this off that we've got a, a position available for Administrator Secretary for the Board. And Support Person for the Controller and Noel for Human Resources. Have any discussion on, uh, any commissioners at this time? I'd like to get some input from everybody. I need to work ahead on this thing. Um, I'm looking at. Two commissioners being on this and I probably gonna be the Personnel Committee, which is myself and Commissioner Russo. So Commissioner Russo, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I would. We have two people in house that applied. I would like to get them interviewed as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other commissioners have any thoughts at this time? Commissioner Melvin?
Just wanna follow through. You, we've, uh, opened up the position and put it out to the, uh, in-house people first and we have two and. If they're qualified, they need to be, uh, considered and, uh, you and David, uh. Will take care of that if they're, they're either qualified or they're not.
Okay, that is our policy is, is to go in-house. So, Mr. Muckenthaler.
Yeah, uh, I just wanna echo the same thing those guys had. Like I said, we got two people in house. Let's, uh. See if they're fit the bill, you know, see if we can get somebody in here. If not, we'll have to go outside of the, you know, other than paper. We gotta get, get somebody in that position.
Okay, Commissioner Melbourne.
And I feel the same way. I didn't wanna pair it with, with, uh, Commissioner Muckenthaler said, but if, if the, the two folks that we have right now fit the bill. Uh, pick one, but if not, I'm always a big fan of, of throwing the net wide. And interviewing other folks within the county or the area that may be interested. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I, Mr. Mr. Ru- or Commissioner Muckins, or excuse me, Commissioner Russo, myself. And we'll start the ball rolling on that. Anything else?
I have one more question. That's something we don't have to bring back to the board in two weeks. If we find that they're good, can we just hire them? To get somebody in that spot?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm nodding yes.
I'm saying, I'm saying yes.
I agree.
Yeah, at the end of the day, I, I feel very comfortable with, with the chairman and, uh, and Jody deciding that factor. Again, if they don't meet the qualifications, they don't feel that they're the best candidates, then throw the net, but if, I'll go with the, with the leadership feels comfortable with.
Okay, well, that'd be, like I say, Commissioner Russo and myself are the two commissioners and then we will go from there. All right?
Uh, just one more, one question I just thought of. Uh, Jody, would this be like, uh, a conditional probationary period?
Well. I think we would need to think about that and talk about that, especially if we have somebody giving up a, uh, sure job to come to our office. Because they wouldn't have any place to return to. Does that make sense? So if we were to hire somebody out of the treasurer's office that had applied, um, the treasurer is gonna fill that position. So if we have an internal candidate. That we put on a probationary period, um, and decide after ninety days that they're not going to make it. So we'll have to talk to the person about that. I guess we'll wanna make sure when we do an internal that they're really confident, um, coming onboard to this office and understand what the job is. So.
I think, I, I think we can determine that when we interview both of them. Okay?
Okay, I, uh, for some reason it escapes me. It's just somehow in the back of my mind, I think we had a. Situation like this in the past and I just wanted to make sure we don't fall into that same trap.
Okay, good question. Anything else from anybody in regards to the Administrative Secretary Position, please? Any commissioner? Everybody shaking their head no. All right, item four, Director of Maintenance and Operations Position, Commissioner Melbourne and Commissioner Russo.
David, I'll go first here. Uh, we've been, uh. We've been interviewing, uh, via Zoom and phone, um, several people. Uh, I believe, uh, we've got it narrowed down to two. We're giving our input and recommendation to Jody, but ultimately she is in charge of, um. Maintenance by her job description and I'm going to rely on her most heavily. Um, I'll give her a recommendation and input, but I, I trust her to make the final decision.
I feel the same way. We do have, next week, we're meeting with one person again and.
People now, David, you just don't know that yet.
Okay. While you did send me then an email, but you didn't give me a date for the second person. That we're gonna meet in person, walk the complex and. Go from there.
Okay, so what you two gentlemen are telling me, we're on to step two, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, do we need any more discussion on that? Any other commissioner?
We just had, like Ken said, quite a few apply and we ended up with two.
Okay, all right, nothing else? All right, with that, we will, uh. Recession until ten o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone. We got everybody present and accounted for again here. Looking, oh, there's Michelle right there, right there in front of me, right in the middle. Okay, just hit ten o'clock on my computer. Good morning. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, February tenth, twenty twenty one. Via Zoom or in telephone. Item number two, Mr. Milver- Melbourne, will you, uh, lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. Item three, roll call, roll call of board members, please.
Melbourne. Melbourne.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, sitting back down and finding my mouse and getting my mute button there. I'm sorry, Michelle.
You should be a pro by now. Uh, Schneider.
Yes, I'm here and I'm zooming from the county building.
Russo.
Here and I'm working out at my house office at one, three, two, eight, five West Shore Drive.
And Muckenthaler.
Yes, uh, yes, I'm here and I'm in, uh, county building, in my office.
And for the record, I'm at the county building in my office. Ken, you wanna book, read, tell them where you're at?
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, attending the meeting via Zoom from my home at ninety-four sixty Oakwood Drive, Roscommon, Michigan.
Okay. Item number five, approval of a minutes for meeting January thirteenth, twenty twenty one and January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one.
Haven't done item four yet for approval of the agenda.
Oops, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Okay, motion for approval of the agenda, motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Roll call, please.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for meetings, January thirteenth, twenty twenty one and January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, which were regular meetings. And then January fourth, twenty twenty one, which was the organizational meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Which was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the minutes for January thirteenth, twenty seventh. And the organization meeting of January fourth. Any further discussion by any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Okay, item number six, public comment, please. Have any public comment out there, please, in Zoom land? Okay, hearing none. Onto number seven, claims, class A claims and accounts, please. Michelle, you are up again.
Move to approve class A's in the amount of one million, one hundred, seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion is made by Mr. Melbourne, second, or by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to authorize payment of class A's in the amount of one million. One hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
I was waiting. Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
Still move.
Second.
Made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Muckenthaler to. Claims and accounts for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Any further comments by any commissioner at this time? Hearing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Melbourne.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number eight, please. Administrator Controller Report.
You're muted, Jody. Thanks, Michelle. I'm not a parent. So a lot of HR related activity, um, as far as interviewing and scheduling of interviews this week, we, um. Did have twenty-seven applicants for the Buildings and Grounds Director Position. Twenty-one were acceptable. Those were reviewed. We interviewed six, as has stated before. We do have two coming in on Thursday that are the final candidates for step two. Additionally, the GIS Specialist Position was interviewed with, uh, two internal candidates that actually were a part of our Gypsy Moth Team. And I believe a decision has been made by, um, our Equalization Director and our I T Director. In regards to which candidate, um, they feel is best suited for the position. But I will let you know that they walked in my office and asked me why I gave them an impossible task to choose from. Because both of those individuals were just stellar. Um, so that, that was a great thing to hear. Quick reminder that we are under the, um, M D H H S order that prohibits public gatherings right now. That is through the end of February, potentially through the end of March, from what I've read as well. So that's just a quick reminder that all of our meetings will have to be via Zoom. There, there are no exceptions to that. W twos and ten ninety-nines were, um, placed out by the end of January. So those were done in a timely fashion. We are working, um, currently on. A couple larger FOIA activity reports. a couple larger FOIA activity reports. It seems like when it rains, it falls with FOIA requests. Some of them I get to parcel out to other departments like Michelle's. We have a large one in our Prosecutor's Office right now. And several smaller ones for, for data that come every year as far as total accounts payable and employment wages. Additionally, our Rock Volunteer Workers are back on site, which is great to have them. The ones that work with me go through and they verify all of the invoices and checks and make sure that everything's there in an order and accountable for, which has to be done before the audit. So it is a huge time saver for me and very much appreciated. And the young lady who does it is great at her job. I did have a meeting with Attorney Troy Daniels and Barb from MIDC in regards to our 2021-22 Plan that will start on October 1st. The Indian Defense Council has approved several more standards that we will have to comply with. So we've got to kind of regroup and see where we're at with that. My guess is we're already doing so, but I have to get that verification from Troy and his team as well. Uh, quick reminder that those that were able to receive as being considered to, to be essential workers through Roscommon County, our next vaccination clinic for the second round is on the 19th. There will be an email to schedule those probably within the next 24 hours going out as well. Clerk Stevenson has been working on a room rental policy for our meeting rooms. Obviously, this would be for external rentals. And so far, she's off to a good start. I feel bad. I haven't given her much attention yet, so I will, I will get to that shortly here, so we can present that at the next work session to you. Additionally, I just wanted to let you know that we do have a grievance that should be coming to personnel potentially. So David, double check your dates with me if you'll shoot me an email so that I, I know if that does come, not to schedule it during that time period. And then finally, just to have you be advised, that I was asked to serve on a focus group for Behavioral Health in Northern Michigan. This was an invitation from a company called TBD Solutions. They have been hired as a consultant to see what the needs are, what facilities currently exist in Northern Michigan and how to fill that gap. So that is it.
Okay, any Commissioners have anything, questions for the Administrator Controller, please, at this time? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, we will go on to Correspondence. It's quite a big package, so bear with me here as we go through this thing. Item A is a Holton County Resolution in regards to, uh, in support of local business. Item B, that's from Holton County. Item B is from Calcasas County Commissioners. It's a pandemic resolution. Item C is 21, a 211 Letter, a Services Reminder. Commissioners, you just may want to say, anybody having some problems out there, 211 is out there and I'll take care of that stuff, okay? Item D. An MRCA Meeting Minutes. And who sits on that board for, is that, is that the one you sit on, Mr. Melbourne?
EDC, yeah, I was there the other day, Mr. Chairman, and I know Mark was interested in.
This is from November. Chuck Corwin was there, so that's good. All right.
You were there.
All right, let me get through this thing. Item E, there's a resume from a Dr. BJ Kumar from the EDC Board Member. It's a board, it's an application to be appointed to the EDC Board, which the EDC Board did recommend that, so that is something that we will be putting on for the next meeting to have him put on that board. Item F. Is MSU Remote Learning Programs and Resources. And that's a number of pages. Item G is Consumers Energy Planet Awards. Need to submit a letter of an intent for that. Deadline is February 12th. Item H is another resolution in regards to Antrim County, a resolution in support of local businesses. Item A, or I, is Alpina County with a resolution in regards to pandemic resolution. And Item J is a resolution in regards to Tusco- Tuscola County, a constitutional Second Amendment Sanctuary County. A copy of that, so. Any questions in regards to correspondence from any Commissioner at this time? Okay, Hearing None, item 10. We've got the Monthly Department Reports, Crawford, Roscommon, Conservation District. It's time to order trees for spring, so spring's coming. There's also a Roscommon County Economic Development Director's Report for January from Brenda Bouchelder. We've got a Sheriff's Report. And we have a Roscommon County Central Dispatch Report from 911. Any Commissioners have anything, comments in regards to monthly department reports? Okay, Hearing None. Item 11, any visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Mr. Frank Peschek and Mr. Leroy Johnson. I see they're on Zoom. I'd like to recognize them and thank them for being on Zoom today.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, item 12, Unfinished New Business, Resolution in Support of Local Business. Ken, you want to go ahead with that?
Uh, yes, I briefly touched on this to see if the other Commissioners would be in support of this, and so basically, I'm recommending that, uh, per our Board Rules, that we have a discussion about this now and then, uh, put it on the, for the next meeting for a vote. It's not time sensitive. But I think, as I recall, everybody was in support of this when we briefly touched on it. Uh, and I'd like to follow through on this at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Kenny. Yeah, I feel, feel exactly the same as far as I'd like to get this moved forward. Also, it should ask, it should also have an addition of COVID-19 vaccinations. It wasn't a complete, it wasn't completely put down on, on the agenda as we're looking at. This was all, this is a, this is a good piece of resolution. It's important that we move forward on and that we show value to the citizens of our county that will behind the the recommendations of this resolution.
Okay, that, I think that's a good idea too, Mark, and I will agree with you on that and support it. And hear what the other Commissioners have to say about that, and I think we could include that for an agenda topic and get a resolution ready for our next meeting.
Thanks, Kenny. Any suggestions from any Commissioners, obviously with answer augment, this proposal would be valued. This was also brought forward from a friend of mine who I have highly value, whose name I will mention in two weeks, if this proposal, if this resolution so passes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, we're discussing, and we're discussing it today, so if it's, if it's an agreement with the Board, we can bring it ahead for two weeks for a motion, so we really don't need to put it on as a work session item because we're discussing it today. But, um, Commissioner Melbourne and Commissioner Melbourne, would it be a resolution in support of local businesses and COVID-19 vaccinations to cover both?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Because in, in the correspondence, we had two counties that did just a business one, and we had two counties that did a vaccination one, where we could just do one together if that's agreeable with you two gentlemen.
I think it's pertinent that we had, yeah, I think it's pertinent that we had COVID-19 vaccination to give it a, the, the full, uh, the full, the full thrust of what we're trying to achieve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so it'd be a resolution that's going to cover both businesses and COVID-19 vaccinations.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Melbourne and Mr. Or Commissioner Melbourne and Commissioner Melbourne are in agreement. Commissioner Russo?
Sounds good, Bob.
Mr. Muckenthaler.
I could probably support that, yes.
Okay, all right, we'll bring that forward as a motion at our next meeting, okay? Which is February 24th. Okay, anything else as far as new or old business, please? Any Commissioner at this time? Okay, Hearing None. Item 13, we have no motions or resolutions. Item 14, Committee Reports, please.
Uh, this is Commissioner Buckenthaler. I had on last Wednesday, Benton Township's Board Meeting and Claims and Accounts yesterday. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Melbourne?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As we've touched on earlier, there were three days we did job interviews for the Director of Maintenance Position. Had the agenda meeting. And it's hidden in here someplace. When we had that, for some reason, I don't have it, Bob. I know you do. I'll let you refer to that. And then, um, on Thursday, the 4th, we had our Veterans Affairs Committee meeting. We provided transportation for 13 veterans for medical appointments, and that's being done by the Roscommon Minibus now under contract. It's working out very well. It's coming in under cost of what we were paying in the past. And it's better to have them do it because they're, that, that's their bailiwick. That's their profession. They know how to transport. And they can coordinate with other area, uh, minibuses to like get people to Traverse City or to West Branch or Saginaw. Uh, also, um, the, we, uh, as an outreach program to enhance the quality of life of veterans during this COVID, we arranged for the, uh, square, is it Square D Ranch or something? Where they gave wagon or sleigh rides to veterans and their family. We had 96 people participate in that program, and that has ended for the year. Uh, now we have a, a program at Cross Country Ski Headquarters where a veteran and three family members can go get a ski rental for free and get a $20 food voucher at the little cafe there. And we also have a program with Hanson Hills where a veteran and the three family members can get a hour of tubing for free. Oh, let's see, and then we had discussion about, we're still getting this liaison with the Sheriff's Department to assist incarcerated veterans. Get them into a, a program that is beneficial to them instead of just incarceration so that they get the, the treatment that they deserve and need and the second chance if available. And I think that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Ken? All right, Commissioner Russo?
Uh, interviews along with claims and accounts. That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Melbourne?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have my, my calendar with me, but I think it was District Health and EDC. Thank you.
Okay, and myself was Health Department on the 27th. Uh, on the 1st, there was a Zoom meeting with Northern Michigan Commissioners Association at 9:45. That went for about two hours. That was real interesting. Um, on, on Thursday, the 4th, was the agenda meeting, and then at this point, that's all I got at this point. So, anybody else, any questions to me or anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I attended the Zoom meeting with you in Northern Michigan Counties. Unfortunately, I had to leave early because I had lunch duty at the Catholic school. Thank you.
All right. On to number 15. Any public comment at this time, please? Many public. Okay, Hearing None, on to number 16, Adjournment, please.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is made by Miss, by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo. To adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you.